All right, we are going to go ahead and get started with our work session this evening, which we will be discussing the findings of the Athletic Facilities Committee. I am going to turn things over to my board colleague, Ms. Teri Cobble Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the spring of 2020, this board voted to establish the Athletic Facilities Advisory Committee. The committee is comprised of community members, district activities directors, students, and it was led by Jeff Russell and Maria Alonso. This group has spent hundreds of hours since they were initially convened to execute the charge that this board put before them. And I think that in recognition of the role that athletics and activities plays in the education of our children, it really called us to evaluate not only need, but also the ways that we could meaningfully invest in athletic facilities and activities across the district. I am really excited to hear the results of the work that has been ongoing since about August of last year. And I know that there is a lot of work that's ahead of us as well, as we begin to not only pour through the findings of the Athletic Facilities Committee, but really be thoughtful about ways that we create opportunities to invest to ensure that the recommendations that have been made to us come to fruition. So I am pleased to introduce to the board tonight both Jeff and Maria, who have led this work, also supported by Cassandra Halls and, gosh, I just lost the other name.
Scott Racker.
Scott Racker, how could I do that? Who really supported and facilitated the work. And I know that we have the Drake Stadium that'll be coming online soon, but also as a way to really invest in our students and our schools, we really have to look at other things that need to be done to sort of balance out the notion of equity in how we provide support to those student athletes, but also ways that we really think about the long-term view for utilizing our statewide penny to support the needs of our student athletes. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Jeff and Maria and ask that they present the findings. I'm sure that there'll be time at the end for us to ask questions, but I do think that this is just a start. And following this presentation, there will be a lot of work for the board and district staff to do as a follow. So Jeff and Maria, I'll turn it over to you and really want to thank you for the time and attention you've given to this work and to the members of the committee for the work that you have done to get us to this point. So Jeff and Maria, it's on you.
Thank you. One quick piece, can everybody see the PowerPoint slide that I shared?
Yes.
Great, okay. Well, as soon as I fix moving it forward, a couple of brief comments, I think, from just logistical piece before I turn it over to Maria for some thoughts is, as we go through this, you may have questions of clarification. We'll try and pause through those, but as Teri had suggested, we'll have plenty of time at the end, hopefully to dialogue with you on that. So Maria, with that, I'll turn it over to you and then I'll take it from there.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening to everyone, to the DMPA School Board. Thank you for giving the Athletic Facilities Committee this time to share with you the research, the valuable acquired learning, and our recommendations. The committee was charged with providing guidance and recommendations for investments in athletic facilities, addressing the district's current and future needs. The outcome of hundreds of hours invested since August 2020 is a very thorough report and a matrix, a living document, that we hope will be utilized for years to come. The work conducted focused on the education of the whole child, as we recognize that a child's success is greatly impacted by their environment and experiences, and in this case, athletics, because it is an important method of enhancing growth and development. We appreciate your time and attention tonight. Jeff?
Thanks, Maria. So I think I have met many of you, but my name is Jeff Russell. Personally, I have three Des Moines Public School kids. One has graduated, one is a senior, and one is a freshman. And we're in the Roosevelt District and our kids have gone to Central Academy. Professionally, I'm the CEO of Delta Dental of Iowa, so I was interested in the previous board action on that as well. Thank you so much for allowing us to do this work. And I want to say right up front that Scott Racker and Cassandra Halls are on the call tonight. And when we use the limited budget provided by the district to engage them, we have overstretched that by manyfold, and we appreciate their work and giving back to our community, as well as our other committee members. So as Teri had said, there were members from each comprehensive high school, one activities director, a community representative as a student, and then there were some at-large members supported as well by district staff, including Jason Allen. And, you know, I want to say that when I took this work on personally, I thought it was a generational conversation. My daughter, who's a freshman, will likely be gone by the time many of these things will be implemented, but I do believe that athletics, activities in general, athletics in specific, are an important part of how the whole student learns, as Maria had suggested. And so as we went through this process, our charge was to really take a comprehensive look at all of the facilities throughout the district and provide you some feedback and recommendations about how to move forward. And, you know, to the extent that this is happening in the shadow of a pandemic and the virtual learning and the hybrid and the back-to-in-person that we've seen and the budget challenges that are clear, we know this is a long-term conversation. But just as importantly, we know that if you believe in the concept that athletics is a critical part of an academic and overall education, that whole student, these athletic facilities are to that experience what classrooms and desks and textbooks are to the academic experience. And candidly, the Des Moines Public School District has a facility's debt, and we'll talk about why that is. And we believe that creating an investment over the next number of years is important to enhance student participation, which of course will enhance achievement, and we believe will serve the entire student much better. So we're going to go quickly through our three phases. The first was really our research and learning. As Teri mentioned, we started last year with the COVID issues. We really started in August and went through this process. We'll give you the recommendations, and then as Maria suggested, this living tool of the Athletic Facilities Matrix. So beginning in August, we had detailed presentations from each of the comprehensive high schools, which included their feeder schools as well, about their particular situations and their facilities and their programs. We were able to do on-person site visits with the appropriate social distancing and precautions, but we were able to see with our own eyes, not necessarily through the screen as we are now, what those facilities looked like. Because many of us are not as steeped in the conversation about how school districts finance themselves, we had a number of presentations from district staff about the district financing process, as well as some of the other pieces around Title IX and the ADA, and looked at other comparable districts. And I think if you look at that, one of the things that we realized is the new conference that we're participating in, but also the suburban school districts, all have a level of athletic facilities that right now is above the Des Moines Public Schools. And to the extent that this is important for our students, not only to continue to participate, but able to achieve, we have work to do. So one of the things that we realized early on was the scope that was given to us was really around the five-year plan. And with all of the issues that faced us late last summer and into the fall and then into the winter, we realized that we needed to expand the horizon of that conversation to realize that this was not just about, you know, affirming or changing the five-year plan, but there was a broader conversation that needed to happen. And so while we did affirm the five-year plan, and while we certainly believe that there are things related to safety in the Americans with Disabilities Act and Title IX that need to happen, our report goes much beyond that. And I think that what we really need to start to look at is, how can we look at additional funding sources, both public and private? How can we continue to make this a priority as we look at educating the whole student? And how can we do that consistently over a period of time? The two pictures you have on your screen are just one example in terms of how we look at that. So the picture on your right is of the North High School softball press box. The picture on the left is of the Valley softball press box, and we could have picked any softball press box in the suburban area or comparable districts. And while you might suggest, well, is a press box really essential for participation? I think it's just an example of what we see across our district. And in fact, again, if you believed in fact that these facilities, the tracks and courts and turf and gyms, are all a part of that overall education of a student, it would be like asking teachers to have classrooms in the hallways without textbooks. The reality is that we have a duty to be able to move that forward in that. One of our students, Elizabeth Saunders, who goes to Roosevelt, in their very first meeting, when we were talking about why we were participating in that, gave a great story of when she had participated and she had been in other suburban districts, and sort of the feeling of pride that she had being able to compete in that type of facility. I think that we really owe that to our students to be able to do that as well. So let me talk a little bit about our process, and then I'll pause here in a couple of slides and make sure that you understand the process before we get into the recommendations. Interestingly enough, when you put a committee together of representatives from each high school and then representatives of the district overall, there could have been a concern about that each high school would be parochial. They'd look at their own needs and they would prioritize those ahead of the rest. In fact, that was the exact opposite of what happened in our situation. But what we realized is that just because we were looking at what the best situation was for the students of the district did not mean that everybody had the same circumstances. And so we really lensed this through two different pieces. And I want to define the terms equity and equality in this particular setting, because I know it can have many different definitions depending on the setting. So equity in our sense is that schools need, campuses need, what's right for their population. It doesn't mean that every school needs to have the same thing. So it's two examples. North High School has a junior RTC program, and I believe, oh, we didn't see it, they have some sort of a shooting range up there. That doesn't need to happen at every comprehensive high school. That's unique to North. Likewise, Roosevelt would love to have a competition track, but the reality is that the geography probably doesn't support that in their environment. You'd have to take out part of the school or part of the baseball diamond and those sorts of things to be able to create that. And so as we looked at that, every school needed to have what matters to it most for its particular population. But on this side of equality, there are certain standards that matter for our entire district and for each school. And so while we certainly would include, you know, safety and Title IX and the Americans with Disability Act, they go much beyond that. And I think the question is, you know, as this board looks at it, should every school have lights for their softball and baseball diamonds so that their kids can participate later and they can be better used? Should every school have an artificial turf so that you can have continued practices across multiple sports, even in inclement weather? And so through all of this conversation, we lensed our recommendations to you through this concept of site-based equity, the fact that each site is unique in its demographics, in its programs, in its situation, in its geography, as well as equality, which is how do we raise, how do we lift up the entire district, and how do we make sure that we have the facilities for each of our comprehensive high schools? So our process is that we created what is called, we've called the Athletic Facilities Matrix. And it really is, it starts with the idea that it is sports-specific. So we took a look at tennis courts and tracks and gyms and football fields and soccer fields and baseball diamonds and all sorts of these, which we'll show you in a second, with the idea through both a practice and a competition lens. And I think that's important, because one of the things that this committee really started to understand was the idea that to maximize student participation, it's best to have practice closest to where they go to school. That sort of makes sense, right? The idea that I get out of school and I'm able to do that. But the idea of competition may be that we can share facilities in a way that creates a world-class facility for our students to compete in. And so we differentiated a little bit, as you start to see that, that there are some pieces around practice and there's some pieces around competition that may in fact be decisions that this board and the administration has to make purely based on the fact of funding over time. So we created a comprehensive audit of the athletic facilities. We literally looked at every single facility. So on a baseball diamond, we looked at the dugouts in the infield, in the pitching mound, in the outfield, in the warning track. Every single piece has a component to that. We believe it's the first comprehensive audit that's happened in the district in the last 20 years for sure, possibly longer than that. And as Maria mentioned, we believe it's a tool that the board and the staff can use as an ongoing way, as circumstances change, as improvements and investments are made, to be able to understand priority. We identify these site-based priorities. So the site teams themselves identified what was important to them. We tried to normalize that across all of the districts so that it made sense that people were looking at things similarly in that. And then we developed a prioritization matrix or framework to be able to talk to you about. So we are not an engineering group, so we didn't create scopes of work, we didn't create bids on these. And so we bucketed them really into low and high investment and low and high priority, and we'll talk about that in a moment. So this screen, you don't need to read it. It's a comprehensive Excel spreadsheet that you'll see that, again, goes into every single. This one happens to be a screenshot of East High School, and you can see all of the different components of the baseball field, all the different components of the softball field. This is hundreds of lines long of work, and a huge shout-out to the activities directors in this, some of whom are on the call tonight, some of who are probably overseeing competition that's happening on a beautiful night. But they spent hundreds of hours working on this to be able to create this matrix as a tool in that environment, and then worked collaboratively together to be able to do that. So what this is is a tool to move forward. What it's not is a listing of one through 30 of the things that you should prioritize. And we'll talk a little bit about that, because as we got into this, the reality of that is it depends on where the funds are available, what the investments are, and then what the logistics are. So as an example, if you have equipment at East High School and are working on a high-investment, high-priority type of a project, there may be a low-investment, low-priority project that makes sense, because you have equipment and people on-site at that point in time. And so this is a flexible process to be able to say, what we've tried to do is give you a sense of what does this look like across the district at every high school and be able to look through that. So let me go through one more piece, and then I'd certainly love to pause to see if Maria or any of my other colleagues have thoughts around the process before we get into the recommendations. But these really are the standards that we set out to be able to rank these facilities by. The first is deficient, and I certainly won't read this for you, but the reality is that these areas, and they aren't always an entire facility, they might be a piece of a facility, are in urgent need of something to be fixed, and there's possibly a health or safety issue. Not saying that there is, but there could be in that environment. So think about a track that had a crack in one of the lanes, or a tennis court that had a crack in it. That would pose a health or safety risk to a participant in that environment. The second category coming down from that is inadequate. So inadequate ones are, they're okay, they're functional, but in some way, they lack the adequacy to be able to sufficiently serve participants. So my example of inadequate is the North High School second gym. So when my son played freshman basketball in that, there's about three feet of gap all the way around that second gym, and I remember watching that, how much these young men had grown since I coached them in sixth and seventh grade, realizing how big they were and how close they were to the court, both for spectators and for student participants, you know, probably something very inadequate. But it can also look like a training room that's essentially a converted closet in one of our high schools. And so while these are functional, you can play basketball in the North second gym, it's really inadequate to be able to serve our students' needs. The third is needs modernization. So the reality is, is that, you know, again, it serves its function, but it's really not up to the standard that we believe that would happen. So we've used as the standard the folks that are in our conference, our new conference now, and the folks that are in the suburbs, sort of the old CMIIML as really a basis for that, and said, you know, these aren't up to the standards that we would have. They don't meet the expectation that we would have. So an example for that is, for instance, you might have a baseball diamond or a softball diamond, which is in relatively good condition, but the infield needs to be rehabbed. And so a piece of that needs to be modernized in that sense. You might have a grass turf field, and because of the massive use that it gets by multiple sports and potentially the marching band, it really doesn't have the aeration and the irrigation that it needs to be sufficient in that environment. Spectator restrooms are another one. While not necessarily required for participation, obviously, as parents and fans and others come to support their student athletes, we need to provide adequate restrooms and those sorts of things for our spectators. You move beyond that, and then it meets expectations. So again, this is something that needs regular upkeep, but it really is that we thought it met expectations. Many of the gyms, the main gyms across the district that have had floors redone and upgrades to them over time, would fit this category in that. Weight rooms, who have been updated in the last few years, in that sense, or repurposed rooms that have been able to be fundraised by booster clubs. Optimal, then, really, is these are the ones where when you walk in them, you go, wow. We understand that this is an important part of an education, and I would point to the East Stadium, Williams Stadium, in partnership with Grand View, clearly a gem in this community and the work that they've been able to do with Grand View. Another example of partnerships as well in that, but something that really allows us to be able to host large-scale events, which you might not be able to do at a facility that met an expectation. It's fine, but you couldn't necessarily host an outside event. And then two other categories that I'll just mention, and then I'll pause to see what questions you might have for clarification. One is non-existent. So having something that's non-existent doesn't mean it's bad, it just means that it's not there. So there are no practice soccer facilities at Roosevelt. The geography doesn't really allow for that, so they practice off-site in that environment. Would it be great if there were practice facilities at Roosevelt? Sure. It feels unlikely in the short term that that would happen in a short-term environment. And then the last is really aspirational. And these, we want to spend some more time a little later in the dialogue about this, which is, the first ones are really about what are our existing facilities and how do we, you know, from deficient to optimal, how do we continue to upgrade those? The aspirational ones are really the game changers. The aspirational ones are really, how do we create an environment that recognizes the student athlete for their participation, that makes them feel like this is a part of their education, that they feel special when they're able to do that, and that we're able to continue to compete, not only in our conference, but with some of our suburban counterparts? So let me pause for a moment and see if there are any questions or any comments, Maria, that you have, or I'd ask Scott or Cassandra if I've missed anything, certainly to jump in. And then we'll go quickly to the recommendations so we can move through this.
I don't, Jeff.
Jeff, this is Scott Racker, superintendent, AHR members of the board. Thanks for your confidence in Jeff and Maria and the committee for the exceptional work they've done. I did want to just highlight one item, Jeff, so it doesn't get lost in the process as you move forward and the board moves forward. The screenshot of the matrix really gives you a good definition of what's on there, but the depth and scope of what that document is as a tool for you is beyond anything I would have even imagined we could have produced. And it's a, not only updated by school, but it's all linked to the sheet that Jeff showed that has all of them, but it's a searchable database. So if you want to look as yourself and get some help, if you don't have the Excel skills, you can find out everything that's a low investment and a low priority, or a high-priority, low investment. You can look at everything across the district that is optimal or that is deficient. And so the team there, and I know that Cassandra and myself will be happy to work with anyone on the staff, to help them understand how to use this document as a tool. It's not just a snapshot in time, it is something that can be updated and used by all of you to help guide your prioritization and decision-making. And we could do an entire session just on the depth of how to use that, but I did want to make a point of that, and again, just reiterate, that would not have come to fruition without members of the committee that brought it to our attention and the ADs that put hundreds of hours in clarifying the definitions and then populating it. So thanks for letting me add value there, Jeff.
Well, if it's okay with the board, I'll move then. It was a great segue to our first recommendation. So there are nine recommendations. They are not in order of priority, they're sort of clustered in a way that made a little bit of sense to the committee. And the first is the process definition, which Scott really just highlighted, which is, we believe that one of the important things is now there is this tool, there's this comprehensive audit, and you have a volunteer committee with a couple of wonderful facilitators who did spend a lot of time putting this into that. And our hope would be is that you would continue to use this in your annual budgeting process with a commitment to funding these priorities moving forward. You know, obviously, if this report lands and sits on a shelf for five years, we're going to be in the same conversation five years from today that we're in now, that we probably were in 10 years ago. And I believe that it's really important to continue to actively engage in this conversation, even amongst all the many important things that you have to tackle as a board. Recommendations B and C are really our current perspective. So the first really is around deficient and inadequate items. And if I could highlight that without reading all of those things, these are fixed now or in the short term? These are issues that really are in need of urgent upgrades in order to maximize not only the participation and the experience of our student athletes, but in some cases, there are some safety issues as well, that need to potentially even move beyond the five-year plan, of which some of are included in the five-year plan. We think those are excellent, but there may be some other opportunities to think about that. Recommendation C, I think, is probably more of a medium-term conversation. That really is to take that list of needs improvements. And again, we didn't want to bombard you with a huge list of hundreds of items tonight to, you know, distinguish between what needed to be done at North and Hoover or Lincoln or East or Roosevelt. But we wanted to be able to say, of those things that need modernization, what's the funding source in the medium term? And we'll talk a little bit about some of our thoughts about that in the future. Again, hopefully, many of these are lower investment, certainly there are some higher investment opportunities there. And this is how we've prioritized those. So if you think about that, again, we are not, most of us, we had a couple of folks who had background in engineering and scoping, but most of us are not that. And so we tried to create a prioritization matrix of, on the left side, what is the priority? So really, we asked the site-based teams, activities directors, as well as other people in the community, and students and coaches, who they reached out to, to say, is it a lower or a high priority? We didn't ask them to say low, medium, high, we just said, is it a low or a high priority? And then what's your sense of the investment? And so I want to walk through how I think a strategy might be for the board to think about these things as you have additional dialogue with folks. In the upper left-hand corner is low-investment, high-priority items. These are focus. I would call them low-hanging fruit to some extent, not to minimize any budget issues, but these are options, items that could be addressed, probably within some level of current funding around this. As you move down the matrix to the lower-left-hand corner, those are the low-priority, low-investment. And as I mentioned before, there may be opportunities to take some of the low-priority, low-investments and do them when you're working on other projects. You may be already on-site, and fixing something else or upgrading something else might not be terribly expensive, rather than sending away the crew and the equipment and bringing them back. As you move to the right, low-priority, high-investment, as you would imagine, probably defer those. At some point in time, we'd love to have a conversation about, we'd love to be in a position where we can be having those conversations about what do those look like? And then the upper-right-hand corner is something we'll talk about in a second, which is really, what are the high-priority, high-investments? And we really believe there needs to be a longer-term revenue plan, a conversation about the revenue purpose statement, and an additional dialogue around how to create, how to expand the pie, if you will, from a revenue perspective. So if you looked at, just as some examples, because I'm sure you're saying, well, what falls into the bucket? In the high-priority, low-investment, things look like the dugouts at North High School, scoreboard enhancements at East, and infield rehabilitation at Lincoln, softball storage at Hoover, or improved weight room at Roosevelt. Things that, while, you know, they take dollars to do, are not probably beyond the scope if investments were willing to be made. What's in that high-priority, high-investment? Well, what if we put lighting on all the baseball and softball diamonds? Indoor batting cages for those high schools that don't have them? A dedicated wrestling facility at North and I think one other school? Or maybe lights at the tennis courts at Waverlin Tennis Courts, which is in partnership with Parks and Recreation? And I should mention this, I'll mention this later, how much we've appreciated our partnership with the Parks and Rec members of that, both Ben Page and then County Boson, who I believe is on this call, representing both Parks and Rec and her role in the city council on that. So, but you can see that, you know, there's varying different levels of investment in that kind of, there's a difference between putting lights on a baseball or softball diamond and upgrading a dugout. And so we've given you some thoughts to be able to say, how, you know, to the extent the dollars are available, dollars become available, where can we make those investments? So our fourth recommendation really is about our aspirational ideas. And I think the committee wanted to say clearly about this, that our aspirational components are not, boy, wouldn't it be nice if? If we only got to the things and improved the deficient and inadequate and, you know, needs modernization, I think that there would be a disappointment level amongst the community and amongst the committee, because there are really some aspirational items that are game changers. And there are two categories of these in the report, one of which are what I would call the big ideas. So one of the big ideas is how could we look at opportunities that are coming about other places in our community to partner? The example- The example in the report is there's conversation right now about a new potential soccer stadium with Pro Iowa downtown, that the nonprofit foundation is raising money for right now. Well, at some point in time, they may be interested in creating an indoor practice facility for that soccer team. One of the big key ideas from an aspirational perspective is, could we have a centralized indoor facility that various teams beyond soccer might be able to use? That football or baseball in the winter, or track and field, depending on the, how the weather? What are those opportunities for us to do that? Well, is there an opportunity for us to be able to partner with somebody like that when they're actually making these investments in our community? I'm not saying that there have been any conversations with Pro Iowa that we'd love to have them, but just an example of, we know there's going to be dollars potentially spent in this environment. How can we leverage those dollars? One of the interesting ideas was in Minneapolis, they created a special projects fund, they actually, it's an equity fund for them. They set aside $100,000 a year that schools are allowed to apply for, for things that are outside of their regular, outside of their regular budgets for repairs and equipment and those sorts of things, to be able to do special things, to be able to enhance that student experience. Would there be an opportunity to build a special projects fund? And then creative thinking about the underutilized space. I said that there is an ability for a soccer practice facility at Roosevelt, but is there a way to think about that front lawn in a different way that could maximize that space, not only for student athletes, but for the broader student community, and potentially for the community at large? So those are really the big ideas. And then if you look at what the facilities would look like, there were many ideas that are outlined in your report, and I'm going to just highlight two. The first I sort of highlighted, which is, I'm sorry, the first really is about turfs at the, at the high school level. So today, all of our practice turfs are grass, which is fine. But they obviously have their own issues based on use and based on weather. Would it be feasible, would it be aspirational, would it be incredible for our student athletes to be able to have a synthetic practice turf that they could practice on even in inclement weather? That would be able to take a lot of the pounding, not only from the sports teams, but potentially from the marching band and other folks that do that? And would that be a standard that we would set across the district, that every one of our schools should have synthetic turf? Or every one of our schools should have a second gym to the ability their geography would allow that? The second big idea is really the last two bullet points on that. And it really is this idea of indoor spaces. As we looked across the metropolitan area, one of the things that we realized is that many of our suburban counterparts have feeder programs that are really built around indoor facilities. So if you think about a baseball or softball program in particular, they're practicing all winter long, because they have the ability to do that in various indoor facilities. And while we do have some indoor facilities throughout the district, you know, what would be the opportunity to have a much broader, shared indoor facility where we could create youth development, where we could host large-scale youth tournaments, where we would bring people into Des Moines to be able to do that? So again, none of these are projects that will probably happen next year, or maybe in two years, although it'd be, it'd be excellent if they did. But this idea about how do we not only just think about the current footprint of our athletic facilities, but how do we think aspirationally about what could be? What is the experience we could create for our student athletes across Des Moines Public Then let's get to money. So we have two more slides on recommendations, and I'd love your dialogue and questions about that. The first is about the revenue purpose statement. And I will tell you personally, I was unaware of the complexity of school funding. And I'm sure many of you are very well-versed in that. But when the revenue purpose statement was created, I believe back in the early 2000s and reaffirmed in 2009, it does not allow for investment athletic facilities through the penny sales tax, except for safety and efficiency, and to be compliant with Title Line and the ADA. Now, if you look at our suburban counterparts in other districts across the state, many of them are much more broad in their revenue purpose statement, which allow for those pieces. And as I understand it, when that original revenue purpose statement was put in place, probably back in 1999 or 2000, there was appropriately a focus on academic facilities. But what's happened over this 20, 21 years of not being able to invest in that is we've created this facilities debt. While other districts have been able to invest and upgrade and maintain that, we've really been hamstrung as a district to only things that are related to safety and efficiency and compliance to these rules. So to the extent that we wouldn't even be able to use some of these funding, this funding to be able to do that, the revenue purpose statement needs to be changed whenever that's appropriate, to be able to allow for that funding stream to be put in place. But that's probably not enough, and we realized that we needed to expand the pie. And that's the next recommendation. One of the interesting things that we realized during our research project is that every school, the activities director, often in concert with the booster club, is also responsible for raising funds for their school. And so, you know, an activities director, potentially with a volunteer grant writer, might go to Prairie Meadows and each of the five high schools, apply for a grant, or Polk County, or other kinds of organizations. And we believe that while each of the high schools are going to compete separately, and there's great rivalries amongst our five high schools, that we could collaborate to raise money. We think that in fact, if the district were to invest in a centralized resource for grant writing, not only would that position probably pay for itself, but it would enhance the ability for all five high schools to have additional funding in that. So instead of going to Prairie Meadows for five individual small grants, why not go for a much larger grant combined in Des Moines Public Schools? Why not look for not only local, statewide, and potentially even national funding? Given the focus on urban education and equity in our society today, there are great stories to be told here about how to raise philanthropic dollars in that environment. But there's also opportunities to be able to look at sponsorships. So I'll put on my professional hat in Delta Dental. It would be a lot easier for Des Moines Public Schools to come to Delta Dental and say, we'd like you to sponsor a banner on every softball and baseball diamond for our five high schools this summer, as opposed to having 10 individual programs reach out to us and ask for a single, you know, for a single banner for their particular program. And if you think, think about that across businesses who would want not only to invest in the experience of students through their participation, but also to be able to see the eyeballs of the spectators, their parents, and others that are there, there would be, I think there would be many opportunities for sponsorships. And while we certainly would need to be careful about how we did that, I think anybody suggesting we should sew a logo on a uniform, I think there are opportunities that are missed. And we were able to do some research with a district in Florida, where they have a centralized person that not only does this grant writing, but also manages the sponsorships across the district, so they can maximize those. They can go to large companies in their community and say, here are the opportunities you might have if marketing in this environment through the idea of high school sports is intriguing to you as a business. So we really do believe that there's an opportunity to expand the pie, but it would be difficult if you asked every activities director who's trying to figure out how to schedule the games, get transportation, make sure the referees show up on time. We think there needs to be centralized resources that are able to do that, that can, again, expand the pie. And the last set of recommendations we have are really a little bit about the other things that came out through this process. And the first really is that the committee felt strongly that we needed to also recognize the importance of coaches in this process. And we know the importance of coaches in helping to develop individual people, individual athletes, individual students, as they go through their participation in athletics. We know that the ability for them to be able to be successful as a team largely is related to coaches. And while it's not 100% focused on the facilities, I think it's pretty clear that when you ask coaches to do a whole bunch of different things, and sort of duct tape and baling wire things together from a facility's perspective, there are other opportunities in other districts, not only in the region, but across the state and across the country, that many of our young and talented coaches have gone on to, where that's just an easier process. And it's important to be able to support our students by supporting our coaches through these, through these facilities. Recommendation H, our eighth, is really about expanding partnerships. This was part of our charge. We were able to scratch the surface on this. I would not say that we were able to get as deep as we had hoped on this. Again, we had great conversations with Des Moines Parks and Rec folks about the partnerships that are there and potential partnerships in the future, as well as places like the YMCA and the Aquatic Center downtown. How can we potentially leverage those facilities, which are world-class? There's no question about that from a competition perspective. How could we leverage those partnerships to do that? And I think there's work to be done there, but we're wholeheartedly in support of where does it make sense? And particularly in competition facilities, where you can, where competing in a world-class facility is something you do only a certain number of times versus practice where you're doing it every, every morning or every afternoon. And then the last one is, we started with a process recommendation, we'll end with a process recommendation, and it really is that we know that there will be changes over this duration, not only in terms of potentially staff. I know there's some restructuring happening right now and changes with retirements, but also in this board. And I will certainly say for myself, I would offer to continue to help orient new board members to this process, but we believe there should be an orientation process to that. I imagine that when you joined the board, whenever that was, probably felt a little bit like drinking from the fire hose, of all the different things that you had to go through. And this is, this is one that my guess is probably doesn't rise to the level of the top things that you do over your first weeks or month. But we'd certainly like to be able to have an opportunity to continue to make this that living document, and continue to talk about how can we orient new board members in that environment? So that was a pretty detailed presentation, you know, for a 40-page report and hundreds of lines in a facilities matrix. But I would say again, thank you so much for the opportunity to engage in this. I really believe that there is, that this is a generational work, that the opportunity to invest in this process and invest in these facilities, while my kids, as a for instance, might not see the value of them, you know, future generations of Des Moines Public School student athletes will reap the benefit. And I think their overall experience, that education of the whole student, that combination of academics with activities will be so much more in living the mission of the public schools. So let me pause there, see what other comments either Maria has, Scott or Cassandra, or any of our other colleagues who are on the teams meeting tonight. And then we'd be responsive to any questions that you would have. We certainly love to engage in a dialogue on how we can move this forward and make it actionable for the Des Moines Public Schools. So thank you.
I think I just want to emphasize the power of the material that the committee came up with. The tool is extremely detailed, and I think it's going to be a great resource for a long, long time. And thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be part of this.
So what questions can we answer for you, or what thoughts do you have?
Jeff and Maria, this is Tom. I just wanted to thank you personally, and also point particular attention to your, and to Scott and Cassandra as well, bringing together representatives from five separate communities within DMPS, and getting everyone to row in the same direction, realize that we're all pulling from the same collective pool of resources. We're all trying to serve the same, you know, large group of over 30,000 students, and making that distinction that there are unique, meaningful, unique differences among our five high schools, and so everything can't just be a cookie cutter approach, but that approaching equity from a variety of different perspectives is very necessary. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of the work, the quality of the document, and especially the tool, because that's going to serve us extremely well moving forward.
This is Terry, and I'd like to echo Tom's comments, and really want to thank both you, Jeff and Maria, for your leadership of this effort, the support that was provided by Scott and Cassandra, and then the hundreds of hours of work that the athletic directors put into this, and the additional work that the members of the committee brought to it. I just have to say, wow. I think when we originally conceived of this, I don't know that we knew exactly what we wanted or what we were going to get, but this exceeds my expectations 100-fold. I think that that interactive matrix that you've put together will serve us well. I think we have to have fidelity to the use of that instrument and continually updating it, and making it a living, breathing document. But I think the value and benefit of having something like that was nothing that I would have ever expected to get out of this process. So I definitely want to thank you for that. I have several, like, key takeaways that I think are important for this board to think about, relative to how this work sort of takes life following the recommendations. But I did mention to the superintendent in our meeting, monthly meeting last week, that I thought a really good next step for us would be to take the Activities, Facilities Committee recommendations, sort of side by side with the five-year plan, to determine how we might be able to accelerate this work, even beyond the funds that are currently available, so that we can give not only meaning to this work, but we can also honor what I think is our obligation, not only to our community, but also to our student athletes. So I'm really interested in diving in and getting sort of up close and personal with this, but also really spending the remaining amount of time that I have on this board in creating a framework that allows us to really be intentional about how this work takes life, and then also sincere in terms of how we really begin to move the needle for our student athletes. So I'm going to reserve any additional comments that I have, but just know that I'm committed to this work, and I hope my board colleagues will join me in really trying to determine how we can best give life to the amazing document and living and breathing tool that you've given to us, that really I think we need to take advantage of. So thank you.
Maria, if I could, I'd like to just follow up with something that Board Member Caldwell Johnson said, the, one of the next step pieces that you had was to overlay this with the five-year, and to large extent, this is a great learning example of the power of this tool. The matrix has the five-year plan incorporated within the sortable database. I just did a run on it. There are 19 items that cross over that are in the five-year plan that are sorted by this database. So that's the type of power that this tool has, and also the learning environment, that it may actually already answer some of the questions that you have as you start planning forward. So again, whether it be with someone at the district level, I know Cassandra is, she's the crafter of this, she is the expert in this, would be more than happy to help you understand how best to maximize the use of the tool. And that's just one example of how you can find that level of information. So I appreciate, let me follow up on that one.
Well, I just want to, this is Rob, to start by thanking Maria and Jeff for volunteering to do this work and doing such an amazing job of it. This is more than I ever could have expected to get, and really just a tremendous opportunity for us. You know, I think it's, I think it's fair to say that we've under-invested in our athletics facilities, and I am fine with the justification for that. But it's also fair to say that, you know, as a board, we haven't fully invested the brain power among the seven of us in really understanding the need that is out there. And this, this really gets us in a, in a great place in that regard. Tom, I just want to follow up with some, some process questions. We, my recollection is, a year ago, although we'd included athletics spending in the five-year plan, we paused on those when we tasked this committee with, with doing their work. Is that, am I right? Are we on a holding pattern on the, on the money that we'd invested in athletics facilities for the current five-year plan?
No, but the, but the idea was that we would, that we would, since we, originally when we, when we launched this pre-COVID, we were thinking that, that we would be getting the report only a month or two into the beginning of the five-year plan. So we have not paused it, but as Scott mentioned, we knew that there would be a number of items likely in the plan that were funded. And so there's an opportunity to, anything that's not already completed, and there's very few that have been, we can revisit those if we need to revisit the scope, or if we need to include something else that's related to any of those items. So anything that, that hasn't already been addressed is certainly open for revisiting.
So I guess my next question, because I think, I appreciate that answer. So I know we, you know, we have an interim, two folks sharing, essentially sharing the operations role for the, for the immediate future. What, what do you think the process looks like for, for this report to start to generate planning and, and action in terms of, you know, upgraded facilities and new facilities?
Yeah, good question. So there's a couple of different things. One is, is looking at what, what's in the recommend, the list of recommendations and what's in the plan, in the current five-year plan. And then cross-referencing that with the, if you remember the matrix that Jeff walked us through, those, those low-cost, high-priority items, to see if there's any gaps there that we can include because of their, you know, relatively nominal cost, that we can we can include because of their, you know, relatively nominal cost that we could incorporate into the five-year plan. And then the, probably the bigger, the bigger issue, so that'll be something that we can address in, in the near term, but the, the bigger, I think the bigger question will be getting to some, getting to some consensus on what are those bigger items that we want to pursue? And then what, what, when is the board comfortable going to the community to renew or to actually recreate a new revenue purpose statement? Because as, as Jeff had shared, most of the, well, virtually all of the, the spending that we've done on athletic facilities based on the, now a couple of decades old revenue purpose statement has to do with creating efficiencies or addressing safety issues. And so we really haven't been in a position to do a whole lot using the statewide penny in that regard. And so that, that will have to be, that's probably the biggest issue that the board's going to have to address is how do we want to re-revise the revenue purpose statement such that we can keep up with the other commitments that we have and also address maybe more aggressively what the recommendations in this plan are?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a couple of thoughts and questions that I'll follow up with you on the agenda planning tomorrow. So don't take us too far down the rabbit hole, but yeah, I, I think that there's, I think that there's some clear work ahead of us and, yeah, I suppose it's partially on Duana and myself to think about where that folds in for the board for the next couple of months. And so we can have a little bit of that conversation tomorrow as well.
Sure.
I had another just brief thought as Rob was sharing his, his thoughts. There were a couple of really interesting takeaways that were lifted up that I definitely think might bear some immediate discussion and conversation with us. You know, that special projects fund and the opportunity to sort of set aside a designated amount that could be used at the discretion of each high school to do sort of low-hanging fruit things that again, address needs that don't require them to go out and then raise that additional money in the community. The notion around the coordinated philanthropy, anybody who raises money like I do for a living knows how important that coordinated strategy around philanthropy is. And I think that it also sort of lifts up this notion of how we infuse equity into a longer-term discussions of investments in each of our schools. We have great boosters, we've got great supporters, we've got, you know, incredible philanthropists that have done amazing things at all of our high schools. But I do think that really looking at something a bit more coordinated might make sense. And then the other thing that I thought was really interesting was around the human capital that we put towards this and how we identify and deploy either existing positions or other positions that really begin to sort of coalesce around this work and how the work of Jason Allen might morph to be something a bit more involved relative to, you know, some of the things that are happening here, also in conjunction to the facilities folks. So I do think that there likely is a whole nother set of conversations that likely need to take place around this board table with our superintendent to really think through and think about how we maximize existing resources to the benefit of this plan, but then also where the gaps are and where we might need to identify other resources that need to be brought to bear so that we can, again, accelerate the opportunity to take advantage of this body of work, so.
Madam Chair, I don't know what your protocol is on a working session, but can I tag on to that?
You can. And then after you do that, I see Ms. Martorano has her hand raised as well, so I think she has a question. So yes, go ahead.
One piece I would add to that conversation about fundraising is that one of the things that really came out of our committee's work is that there were a lot of "ands" in this rather than a lot of "or's." So the idea that boosters can continue to raise money for special projects and the district can do something in a centralized and coordinated way, I think is an important distinction in terms of expanding that pie. And I, I think what you will find, and if you were to talk to any of the activities directors or any of the booster clubs in the five high schools, I think what you would say is that if they knew they were partnering with district funds, it makes it easier to raise funds at their local level too for, for doing that. And I think there are people willing to do that work. There's two fundraising plans happening right now on the athletic side at East and Roosevelt through their foundations. And I think that the, to the extent that those can continue to lift all shifts, I think that would be, would be beneficial to the students.
I'm curious about your processes during research and learning, that phase of the project. And I should take a step back and say thank you. This is, clearly has been a very large project over the last year and I appreciate all the hard work and detail that you've put into it. But during that research and learning phase, did we review the participation by activity? Do we have analysis on the percent of students participating by activity as well as achievement data for students that are participants in activities and athletics? And do we have the race ethnicity breakdown of those participants and, and their achievement versus non-participants?
So I'll take a little bit of that. Cassandra has put up in the matrix, you'll see that there are participation data within the matrix by sport. And I believe Jason Allen is on this and I might lean on him or Cassandra on this. But we had a number of conversations about various demographics in terms of that. The actual data, I believe, related to achievement has not been correlated within the Des Moines Public Schools, but it has widely been evidence-driven across multiple districts throughout the United States. And in the report, I think it's footnoted, at least a couple of different academic studies that would indicate that students who participate in any activity, but in this case athletics, are more likely to have better academic outcomes and better achievement. I would look to Cassandra or Jason maybe to help me with that.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Jason.
Go ahead, Cass.
Just one brief comment on how we captured participation. We did delineate between how each facility is used by athletics. And then we also took into account that a lot of the facilities are utilized beyond athletics for community use and then other kinds of uses beyond athletics. So if the performing arts uses the gym for practice, something of that nature. So we tried to recognize that these facilities don't just solely serve athletics, but also other activities happening on each campus and supporting the communities as well.
Yeah, and I was just going to add that we also, we do have data, both demographic data as well as academic on our students. We have that by sport, you know, we can essentially pull about everything. We're actually in a separate work group looking at that information now in regards to stipends. And so that is information we do have available.
Thank you for that clarification.
Ms. Sawyer, is your hand raised as well?
It is. Thank you. Yes, first I would like to say thank you to, to all of the volunteers on this committee, to Jeff, Maria for taking the lead and co-chairing this committee. It by far exceeded my expectations, just as what my colleague, Ms. Caldwell-Johnson, had stated earlier. It's very thorough and depth and will give us, it's just a great tool that we can use moving forward. So my question, and I don't know that you have an answer, but definitely looking at, you know, you had talked about, obviously this is facilities, but looking at, I think, Jeff, you had mentioned, if we were to invest in, like, shared facilities and indoor space, maybe that could be a conduit for, for kids to be able to engage in sports or athletics at an earlier age. And so I know we have a great partnership with City of Des Moines Parks and Recs and how they are working to engage kids in youth sports. Did you at all talk about participation for youth, starting younger and maybe barriers and how we could overcome barriers for, for youth to engage in athletics?
I'll take them and then maybe some of my other colleagues can, can tag on. We did talk about that and I think we specifically talked about the feeder programs that exist in the suburbs and to the extent that they exist in Des Moines Public Schools and in partnerships with, with Parks and Rec, where those opportunities were. And recalling one person on the committee, I can't remember exactly who at this point, who was talking about taking his daughter out to the suburbs, going to a facility to practice, whatever their sport was, on a regular basis to be able to do that. And wouldn't it be great if we had that facility in the city of Des Moines in a partnership with the school district to be able to do that? And I think there's a fair statement around that. Not, you know, not every family has the socioeconomic means to be able to afford to do those things as well. And so I think there's opportunities that are, the barriers that are put in place of kids because of that. So to the extent that we talked about it, I'm not sure that there's great data around participation prior to, within the district. I think there's more anecdotal data, but I think the committee was, was nearly unanimous on anything we could do to help create participation at a younger age would be beneficial, not only in terms of achievement, but keeping them engaged in the process throughout, throughout their middle school and high school careers. I don't know if anybody else had anything. Maria is the expert at this, having run a youth soccer program for many, many years, so I should probably have deferred to her.
So I'm going to speak probably specifically about soccer. And I think the, the use of facilities is so important and yet so limited. We have, I find that families struggle accessing indoor space particularly in, in the fall and winter. And we're speaking of specifically children that are five, as young as five, six years old. And so we have a lot of interest from the community in utilizing spaces, but oftentimes the space is very limited. And so Jeff was speaking about someone going to, to a suburb to utilize a facility. And in my community, that's what we do. We, the soccer program that we started, which is a nonprofit program, we started it in Des Moines. And because of the limited space, we took that and, and were functioning in West Des Moines because they have been able to provide the space for us to, to do soccer activities. And so I think having the ability to utilize, just knowing that we have space available would, and the community knowing that they have that ability to use gyms around the district would create such relief, I think. And it would engage, I think, children from a very, very young age.
I would just add, I would just add with our, with our partnership with Parks and
Rec, which we have, we have a scholarship program that allows students who fit within the criteria to participate for $5 or less. You know, when we started that, I guess that process, just in terms of getting families signed up, we were on the early stages. Today, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 15,000 to 16,000 students signed up now. And that's with Parks and Rec providing somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe six to seven sports. And so it doesn't mean that every kid who signed up will participate, but it gives them the opportunity and the access. Where we go from there is then looking at the availability of facilities and how can we be creative and, and providing some additional supports while trying to create competitive programming so that, you know, our students don't look elsewhere. Obviously, we can't, and we can't meet every need, but certainly it is something that we are, we're doing more with and would have seen a lot more expansion except given COVID. And so just, so that's a little bit info too.
Yeah. If I could add one piece, I think that's a great point about the partnership. It starts, from my perspective, it starts to become this synergistic circle around this. The facilities generate the ability to have more opportunities for student athletes to participate, for kids to participate. The types of facilities that end up in this optimal category we had that allow you to have tournaments, slightly more competitive pieces as, as kids get older, which then lead to coaches who want to be in a district, who can create a feeder program, who can be successful on the field. And I think that you don't have to look very far outside of our own borders to see high school and feeder programs who have done that based on facilities. And so I think there's opportunities about, you know, how do we reinvest, you know, to the extent that rental fees are being paid? Are those going back into the athletic programs? Are they being used for stipends? Are there, where are those opportunities to leverage those dollars that can, can continue to help be sort of a beneficial cyclone and all of that with our, with our youth development?
I see Maria's got a hand up too. Do you have something to add to that first? If so, go ahead.
I actually just wanted to add that at least, I would say that at least 80% of the participants that we currently have in our program are from Des Moines. And all those families travel to West Des Moines every weekend year round because we don't have facilities available, facilities that are accessible and feasible. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good, I guess, segue to what I was going to ask about. I've got a couple of sort of non-related questions, but I'll start related. I just want to add to that. I, I'm currently an adult soccer player in Des Moines and we drive as far as Ames just to play. Like, we used to play at County, but we got kicked out like six or seven years ago. So you have this outdoor fields as a challenge, indoor fields as a challenge. When I coached at Goodroll, all the middle school kids came to our backyard to play twice, well, four times a week. The girls came two days, the boys came two. So yeah, but, but that leads into my question about the matrix. As I noodled around through there and looked at it, it's, it's a lot of fix up this and repair that, which is obviously necessary, but I had a hard time finding the, the aspirational pieces. Which, which column do I sort by to find those future-looking parts, the, the cool stuff, I guess?
So Maria, correct me if I'm wrong here, or sorry, Cassandra, that the aspirational pieces are less in the matrix than they are in the report. Is that true? So the, what the matrix was intended to do was to give an audit of current facilities. So that's really all it was, is to say all the things that are currently in the districts are the conditions and what would the priorities be? I think if, if you brought the, this committee together and said, what are all the different aspirational ideas they'd have, we could be here for a few hours. We've had many of those conversations over the course of eight months and I think there are a lot of those things, but I think you're starting to coalesce around the things that you're hearing, which is, and as a former, you know, youth sports coach myself with my kids, there's never enough gym time, there's never enough field time, there's never enough, you know, court time to be able to do those kinds of things. I think that's probably likely, but how do you create a system that allows to expand those so that you can have more kids playing?
Aspirational ideas, the early concepts that we talked about start in the report on page 17. So if you look at the PDF copy of the report, you'll see early ideas there.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess second is a little bit more, more of a functional question, but who would you guys recommend takes responsibility for keeping this matrix updated? Like, where should that lie?
Well, in our report, we suggested that maybe it was Jason Allen's role. Not to throw Jason under any bus here as we go through that, but it feels like that's a great opportunity to, to do that because, you know, and I'll say that, and kudos to Jason and to his colleagues and the activities directors. One of the interesting things that happened, I think maybe as unintended consequences, how much each of the individual activities directors now understand about each of the other schools and their own facilities because they had to work on this matrix together. And I think to keep that team together, the five activities directors, even as there's transition with Jason's role, I think would be a great way to, to do that because they're just the closest to those facilities.
While I don't have any questions, I do want to thank Jeff and Maria and Scott and Cassandra for the information. I think I echo some of the same sentiments as my board colleagues. This was probably over and beyond what I expected. I think it does give us a really great tool to utilize to be able to see where we need to start. I do believe that our facilities need, need to look great. You know, I think it's something to say for our students when they can walk onto a field and see something that they can be proud of or just have the equipment that they need or just, just something that speaks volumes. So. or just, just something that, that speaks volumes. So um, Jeff, I, I like when you um, just kind of compare what we would do in a classroom, we would want to do the same thing um, for our student athletes as well. And I think some of the things um, that you, you mentioned that I can, can relate to, I think the money thing is working smarter and not harder. I'm finding ways to collectively come together to raise the funds that we need. And then I do think that another place for us to start is looking at the revenue purpose statement. Um, the recommendation that you made of that being modified, um, Ms. Caldwell Johnson, I know that you're really excited about this and glad that um, you are going to be invested in this, as I think we all will be. I do agree with um, Rob, that we will talk about this as well during our agenda planning. We're going to have to create some steps in the actions that we want to take as a board um, to move forward. I think there are some incremental steps that we can start taking, but I, I just want to thank you all for your time with this because I know you put in lots of hours um, to give us these recommendations and greatly appreciate it because I, you gave us a place to start. You took a lot of the work out for us um, that we would have to do um, also to be able to build upon this and also to share this um, with the community. But I think we're, we're, we're in a, a position to really move into the right direction when it comes to our facilities and to really make the necessary improvements needed. Um, Maria, when you say that, you know, students are traveling to West Des Moines and other places just to, to play sports, that's something that um, I definitely don't like to hear and, and would love to see how we can do things um, to maximize our partnerships that we have here to, to start creating some better opportunities from our students here in this district.
Well, if I can uh, speak on behalf of the committee, thank you again for, for your uh, your willingness to, to listen to this. I think uh, on behalf of Maria and I and Scott and Cassandra who facilitated this in the committee, we're willing to stay engaged at whatever level makes sense uh, for this board as you continue to move forward and um, if uh, I'm not sure if we're at the closing part, but I wanted to, to read a quote that I think is important. So you, on the, the cover of the Athletic Facilities Committee, two of our students uh, representatives wanted to write their own letter to the board. And I thought this quote was pretty poignant. The work this committee has done gives the school board the opportunity, opportunity to show athletes across Des Moines their value and their growth in extracurricular activities deserves to be invested in. And I think that uh, those, those two students, I think, are actually on the field tonight. I think they're, they're both competing. Uh, so they weren't able to be here, but I do think that there's an opportunity. And I do believe it's a generational opportunity to help invest in the future of Des Moines Public School Student Athletes. So thank you.
We can't, we can't hear you, Ms. Martorano. Yes. Ms. Martorano, were you asking about? Ms. Martorano, were you asking about the document? Yep, that was sent out um, by Ms. Jenkins on April thirtieth to the board.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Nope, that's okay. Are there any other questions, comments, or anything else before we close this work session? Okay, hearing none, I again want to thank you, Jeff, Maria, Scott, Cassandra, and others who are on the call really for your, your time and commitment to this. Um, this is something that we will continue to, to work on and, and start to come up with a plan of how we move forward and when it comes to the area of facilities for our, for our districts. So thank you again for your time and being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Thank you, everyone. And that will end our work session.